Alright, so if you'd like to know a little bit more about me. Again, my name's Jason Morgan. I've been in a private tutor since the year 2003, which means that this is like my 18th year now of doing it, seventeen and a half. I've been teaching AP European History most of that time. I started, I think, in 2005 or '06, but I only do review courses. I haven't actually been a teacher in school. Let's go backwards to my high school experience. I took AP Euro in high school, just like you guys did. And it was my first AP course. It was really difficult for me, for me as my junior year, because my school didn't allow us to to take any courses, AP courses until junior year. And a teacher didn't like me for some reason. Most teachers have, but that one didn't. He really motivated me to study harder by calling me a name after class, a bad name, which is very strange, but it worked. And with about six weeks of really intense unfocused studying, but very intense studying, I took the test and that found out a couple of months later, I got a five. So that was the beginning of my European History journey. When I got to college, I went to Catholic University of America. I ended up, which is in Washington DC on a scholarship. I ended up taking a lot of European History classes because the Catholic Church, of course, is founded in Europe, and it's a big part of their history. Plus, I was an English major and English and history go like this, especially when you're in the honors program. So I ended up studying all the stuff from high school again in college. And then starting after college, after I graduated, a few years later, I began reviewing people, reviewing European History with people like you, high school students. And to this point now, I've been doing a lot of AP review sessions for people leading up to the exams. Sometimes I do weekly review sessions for seven weeks, you know, with groups, three hours each. And I've also written a lot of AP European History exams for a very well-known test prep company, whose name you know. And that's really fun to write an exam. I'm kind of joking. I have joking, half not. I would say that like you guys have all done a DBQ, I presume. The only thing harder than actually answering a DBQ is actually is making a DBQ out of nothing. It's really tough. You have to find all their sources. You have to find a good balance of them, and they have to be in the public domain, so nobody has to pay any rights to them. And the multiple choice are very challenging to write to. But, so yeah, I kind of know European History backwards and forwards at this point, which is why you should listen to me, which is why you're all here. So again, Jason Morgan, look at my profile in the chat box if you want to know even more about me. Okay? The exam. I think you guys all know how AP exams are scored on a scale of one to five. Well, 11% of people who take this exam get a five. 11%, if you'd like to write this down. By the way, I can't see you guys, but at home, please take some notes on this. Okay? Please take some notes, especially once we get to the content review of this, of this session. 11% get fives, 20% of the people who take this get fours. So put those two numbers together, and the 31% of the people who take this exam actually quote unquote "pass", because, because of course you need a four or a five these days to qualify for college credit. That means the other 69% get ones, twos, or threes. So your task is to pull yourself out of that muck of that 69% into the 31% that's going to save a little bit of money in college. You should already know the structure of this exam. In a normal year, if you're taking a paper exam, there's four parts to it. There is the multiple choice. There's the short answer questions. There's the DBQ, database question, which strikes fear into the hearts of everyone everywhere. And then there's the FRQ, the free response questions. This year, of course, is a little bit weird, as was last year because of the coronavirus epidemic. And as you already know, I presume there's, they've given three different dates that you can take this exam. May 7th is going to be paper in school only, if your school is in, live and in person. And then May 19th and June 2nd are the other two test dates. And on those dates, you're going to have a digital or a paper option, depending on what your school is doing. So this year is weird. You have three different test dates to choose from. I'm not sure exactly if you get a choice at your school. Let me tell you which one you're going to take. In terms of what they test, here's a good way to think about it. Please make a note on this, and I'll share a screen in a few minutes. But first of all, they do one-third of the exam about cultural, artistic, and intellectual stuff. One-third of the exam is cultural, artistic, and intellectual history of Europe since 1450. Another third, the second third of the exam, is political, international relations, and war. History, military history. So the second third of the exam is political, international relations, and military war history. The third third that they like to test you on is socio-economic stuff, social trends and economic trends. They're all balanced nicely together. They are all mixed throughout the multiple choice section. They're all, like, if you get three choices for the FRQ, you're probably going to have one of each of those. None of them are weighted any more than any other. So you do need to have different types of comfort with the different aspects of life in European History over the last half millennium. Okay? Again, you guys, if you have any questions, please drop them into the chat. All right, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and I'm watching it on the screen as I talk. Now, how should you study? Let me share a screen really quick, and I'm just going to be typing on a whiteboard so you can see. Number one, six weeks of studying is ideal. This, this exam is not something you can really study for in three or four days, as much as you might like to think you can. The vast majority of us need several weeks to really go over it well. That should be enough time for some of you, and for those of you who are taking the exam on May 7th, that's not enough time. But I hope you're taking one of the later dates, or if you've been studying already before that. Here's the key, though, and I'm gonna put this one in capital letters. I am asking you nicely and politely to study the eras and the broad trends of history as opposed to drilling down to dates and names and other details that will not get you a five necessarily. Okay? What the test scorers are looking for is a grasp of the broad strokes of history with some analysis of details, some, enough to show you that you have it. They're not expecting you as high school students to be able to write at like a PhD level about European History. I have found that sometimes students put too much stress on themselves to become too expert in European History for this exam. It's not necessary. Okay? Study all the eras, know the story of each era, and know the trend that each one represents, especially how they link together sometimes when possible. Okay, so that's number two. Number three, when you're studying, you should know Persia. Persia's a wonderful mnemonic device that helps you organize your thoughts when you're writing essays. It can also help you when you're trying to organize your thoughts in remembering the big story of an era. Anyways, Persia's a tool you should have in your back pocket, political, economic, religious, social, intellectual, and artistic. Has nothing to do with Iran. This, Iran doesn't even enter into European History 1450 and after. So this is simply because the letters fit P-E-R-S-I-A. Okay? Fourthly, another way to study for this exam that you should know how to do is with study guides. If you are an overachiever, and if you're a student, never feels like he or she is, is good enough for studying enough, you probably, your first reaction to study for this exam will be to grab your textbook, if you're using one textbook for this class, and to start rereading it. That is about the worst thing that you can do to prep for the AP Euro, because textbooks are famously, famously full of details and famously full of a lot of causes and effects that is no way you can study in a few weeks' time. After all, you've already taken most of a year to go through that textbook, and how many of you actually know everything that's in it after that year? It flies on your mind quickly. So in lieu of your textbook, I want you to put it away, provided that you use one. If you have primary source materials that you've been using throughout your, your AP Euro course, put those away. Those aren't going to help you very much either to prepare. It's a cliche, but the best way to study for these is to buy the study guides. They are not, they are, they exist for a reason, and I have two specific recommendations for you. I'll put them here underneath. First, study the history outline or content, they call it content review in McGraw-Hill's Five Steps to a Five. AP Euro. That is an absolutely wonderful book. I use it when I tutor students too, just as a quick reminder for myself, if I'm caught. The, the content review history outline they have in there is really short, in a good way. It's concise, there's no wasted words, and looking at that content review will actually give you a broad picture of European History in your head, if you look at it enough. Okay? So first, that's the first thing you should do, and you should, if you don't have that book, you should like, as soon as this session ends, go on Amazon and quickly order it for yourself. Get the paper copy, so you can draw on it, you can write on it, and it's a little easier to study from than a digital copy, if it even exists. Once you finish going through that content review, then you can graduate to the second study guide, and second and last one. Study the content review and the Princeton Review's Cracking the AP Euro Exam Book. Okay, there's a premium edition, it's really good. That content review is a little more detailed than the McGraw-Hill book, but you will graduate to it once you know the McGraw-Hill stuff. In addition, the Princeton Review book has wonderful exams. You should take those exams in that book. Don't take the McGraw-Hill stuff. And don't talk to Kaplan at all. There's no reason to look at Kaplan materials. Definitely stick with McGraw-Hill and Princeton Review for your two reviews. Okay? I'm going to stop the share. You guys can screenshot this if you want. Give you a couple of seconds. Leia, the first third was culture, art, and intellectual stuff, history. The first third is culture, artistic, and intellectual history. Okay? The official course description divides the course into nine units. You don't have to do that. You don't have to divide it into nine units. I find it's easier to think about it in terms of like maybe 20 to 25 different stories that you want to know, to be able to write about for the different essays on the exam. And once again, let me rhyme, I'm going to remind you a second time, because this is so important. I'm going to say it again, and please write it down. You don't need an in-depth knowledge of European History to get a five on this exam. That's asking too much of yourself. Okay? You're not getting a PhD, not yet. Instead, what you want to have is like a horizontal view of, of history, as if you're a bird flying across a timeline, and you're looking down at the stories. That's the idea that you want to have in your head when you sit, when you sit down to take the exam. In other words, study horizontally, don't study vertically, no drilling down. Stay, stay loose on top. Okay? Once you know everything that's like on the top surface of those stories of each era in European History from the Reformation, the Scientific Revolution and onwards, once you know the big stories for each, then you can go, watch my hand, you can go to the next level down of detail. That's where Princeton Review can help you. Okay? That content review will help you get into some more details, but not too many, to write some killer essays. But I wouldn't go any further than the second level of detail, two swipes of studying, if that makes sense. The general stories and then a little bit more dirt on each one, and you should be done. You should be done. Are there any questions on that? Any issues? Okay, so what I'm going to do for you now is the thing that most students find the most helpful, in like the 15 years since I started doing live AP Euro review with people. Overwhelmingly, students have more issue with just knowing the history than they do with writing essays or answering multiple choice questions. So I'm going to take some time in this session, if it's all right with you, probably 20, 25 minutes now. I'm going to do like a quick bird's eye view, content review of European History for the AP European exam. I'm going to highlight the stories and the eras that you do need to know in order to get a really good score. I'm not going to touch on every single like niche in European History, but I'm going to stick with like the major and medium-sized ones. What I'd like you to do is to have either Microsoft Word document open, or even better, write by hand on a notebook next to your computer, like a paper notebook, the notes that I'm going to put on a whiteboard right now. Fun side note. Experts in education have found that handwriting notes, as opposed to typing them, results in a retention rate that is three times greater than for typing them. There is something weird, there's a strange connection between our brains and our hands that results in better retention. It's very strange. So I would urge all of you to take some notes in hand, by hand right now, and continue to do that also in your classes, and actually you'll see a difference, you really will. But one way or the other, please remember this stuff. I'm going to share a screen right now. We're going to start to go through European History. Give me one second, you guys. Okay, I think we'll start with Burgundy. How's that? It'll be about 22, 23 different eras and stories that I'm going to go through, and we'll take maybe like less than a minute on each one. That's okay. The first one you must, absolutely must know is the Italian Renaissance. Specifically, there's going to be two parts, the Italian Renaissance, that I'd like to test on, two areas of life. Anyone know what they are? Put it in the chat box. What, what areas of life are, is the Italian Renaissance typically associated with? There should be a an easy question for all of you. No responses. All right. We have a bunch of spectators and no participants here today. The arts is number one, and that is obviously all visual arts, but also literary arts. There's quite a few famous works of literature in the Italian Renaissance. The other segment that you want to pay attention to is education. Make sure you know how education changed in the Italian Renaissance. Okay, you can talk about this thing called the studia humanitatis, if you remember that. Yes, humanism, exactly, Jothi. Number two, the second era that you want to know follows the Renaissance, because the Renaissance kind of gave birth to this next one, which is the Reformation, the Protestant Reformation, when the dominance of the Catholic Church over the European continent for the last 1,500 years was finally challenged. Had never really been challenged before. It had ruled with an iron grip. Okay? You need to memorize major names and what they did. Top two names associated with Reformation. Chat box, who knows what they are? Where the major reformers. Martin Luther, of course, and the stricter one, Mr. John Calvin. There are other names that you could know that are associated with the Renaissance, with the Reformation. Couple more might be, you might want to know who Zwingli was. He was Swiss, very strange last name. And then the Scottish Reformation guy, his name is Knox. Okay? But Luther and Calvin must be, are mandatory to know to get a five. And even a four. Number three, the Age of Exploration, which is the age of the conquistadores, los conquistadores. Two major countries in order, Portugal and Spain. Know the differences between them, be able to list a bunch of the different, if you want to get a five, be able to list a bunch of the different conquistadores and who they sailed for. Remember, though, that a lot of those people like Christopher Columbus just sailed for whichever king gave them the most money and the coolest ships. They were kind of like highly paid soccer players in Europe today. They're just, they went to the best clubs, essentially. That's why Christopher Columbus, an Italian, ended up sailing for the King of Spain. Portugal was first out of the gates, and they established what was primarily a naval empire, if you want to call it an empire at that point. They established and maintained their holdings mostly by sea, mostly by sea. Spain, on the other hand, was a little bit later on at the starting block, but they established a, obviously a much bigger empire, and they did it primarily after sailing to those lands by getting off their boats and continuing on land. There's the third country also, who dipped their toes into the explorish, explorative waters at this point. It was actually England. So understand how that began. Fourth, they absolutely do like to ask questions, specifically in, particularly in the multiple choice, about the slave trade and this thing called the Commercial Revolution. Anybody know what the Commercial Revolution was? If you can like type a quick description in the chat box, please do. I'd love to know what you guys think. Commercial Revolution. Romanticism is associated with it, Jothi? Brian Morton naval trade further distances? Yeah, obviously there was more, a lot of naval trade going on, but after the Age of Exploration, I mean, Portugal had sailed all the way to China. So I don't know if there was much further distance going on there. The primary thing you want to know about the Commercial Revolution was this. This is when Europe got very expensive. Correct, Jothi, triangle trade is associated with slave trade. Yeah. Europe became expensive. And Spain became expensive first because of the inflation that occurred in their country. That inflation was caused by the arrival of huge amounts of bullion, gold and silver and other valuable things that they were extracting out of their new overseas colonies. So the, no, Europe had never seen inflation like this before. I think the cost of living multiplied by a factor of six and 10 years in Spain. Just imagine that, like your coffee at Starbucks, which is currently $3, it becomes $18 in 10 years from now. So the Commercial Revolution really, really, really affected Europe economically. So this would go well under the E portion of Persia. Wars of religion are good to know, and what's the biggest war of religion that they're gonna, that you might see on the exam, and which was the biggest and the most final war of religion period? What was the name of it? Yeah, very good, Leia. It was the Thirty Years' War. From 1610 to 1640-ish. It is one of the most complicated wars in European History. At that time, it was the deadliest. They think about 7 million people died in it, which back then was, imagine how, what a large proportion of the population it was. The Thirty Years' War had a bunch of moving parts. It had three phases to it, and it had a series of interlocking alliances that shifted. And a lot of it was based on two things. Mercenary armies and a lot of intermarriage in the nobility, specifically on the Catholic side with Spain and with the Habsburgs. So I wouldn't say that you need to know a lot about it, but you do need to know the causes, the effects, and a little bit of the details, but not too many. It's too much for, for this exam. Okay? Anyways, keep in mind, that was the last war of religion that Europe ever fought. All future wars were usually fought over land or resources. Okay? The end of religious wars. Following that, I know that number two is the Reformation, and so I took my sweet time in getting to the opposite, which is the Counter-Reformation. Counter-Reformation is a fun little era. It's a good story, because there are only three things you have to remember. Who knows the Counter-Reformation, the three things that you have to remember for it? Leia asks a question, how is the intermarriage part related to the religious wars? The Habsburg family linked Spain, Austria, and the Netherlands altogether through marriage, even though they're not geographically contiguous, to create this unusual kind of alliance against England, and then those who chose to defend against England. Does that make sense, Leia? Jothi, you're absolutely right. The Council of Trent was the major thing for the Counter-Reformation. At the Council of Trent, Catholic, the Catholic authorities got together and for about 30 years decided to examine their own catechism and their own teachings, their own dogma, to decide if maybe these Protestants had a point or not. Right? They concluded that Protestants did not have a point. They concluded that their dogma and their teachings were 100% infallible, that their teachings were perfect, and that they were never going to change. I'm not exaggerating. That's what happened. And so it took them 30 years to figure that out. That's the Council of Trent. Number two, Catholics established a new order of priests who are going to be much, much stricter with themselves, much more like moral than the other priests had been, who were selling all the indulgences during the medieval era. What's the name of that order of priests? They were called God's Army. Does anyone know? They have about 20 to 30 different universities in the United States, including Georgetown, which is the jewel of their crown. They're called the Jesuits. Exactly, Leia. They educated me, 7th grade to 12th grade, when I took AP Euro. And then the third thing, the gross one, the bloody one, they undertook a series of tortures to force people to convert or confess that they were Jews or Muslims. By the way, there was not just one inquisition, there was a series of them. I think there were three. The biggest one, of course, was in Spain. That's one we all know. But there were smaller ones in Italy, and then the third one, I can never remember. I have to look it up. And they took place over a series of like about 100 years. So it wasn't a single five-year event. It was more like a policy that was enacted at different points, at different times in Southern Europe, where Catholicism always flourished. Number seven, you should know the story of the Dutch Golden Age. Like 1600s. Middle class. All these keywords you should know of the Dutch Golden Age. I went finally to the Netherlands about a year and a half ago, two years ago, just before COVID hit. I thought, I really was interested to go, because I think the Dutch Golden Age is one of the most interesting parts of European History, and I liked that part of it. It was a little more boring overall than I thought. But it was good to go there, and I definitely would return. All right, so now let's do an important one. You should know the story of English politics from 1600 to 1715. Maybe that sounds really, really intimidating when I put it like that, but it's not. It's not. There's just two things you want to remember. There were basically five leaders during those 115 years, and the first letter of their names, those kings, forms a palindrome. This is an easy way to remember the story of this era. That palindrome is J-C-O-C-J. That palindrome is J C O C J. Does anyone know the names of these five kings? And hint, one of them was not a king. He was a lord protector. No ideas? So he, you are correct. Leah, I think you're correct. Yeah. It's James the first, Charles the first. Oliver Cromwell. Charles the second and James the second. Okay. You should know the story of how this happened. This is the English Civil Wars were right in the middle of it, right? Which resulted in Oliver Cromwell becoming the Lord Protectorate, dressed all in black and carried a briefcase to his office every day while he was protecting the nation. When he got too old to serve anymore, then they politely asked for the king to come back, the king's son, who they killed, killed King Charles the first. And they asked his son to come Charles the second, who served for 25 years. And then his brother, James the second, took the throne and he tried to take. The country back to where it had been under James the first at the beginning of the palindrome. What is the big theme that you're supposed to pull out of these 115 years? Does anybody know? What changed to the. The British throne as a result of these 115 years? How did it transform? This is what you want to know. Please tell me somebody knows this. This is meter. The English monarchy transformed from what to what? I put this in caps because it's so important. The English monarchy transformed from a divinely inspired or divinely given monarchy to a constitutional monarchy. In other words, the power of the king initially at the beginning of this under James the first came from God supposedly. Okay, that's why King James the first translated the Bible. So we still use the King James Bible. By the time James the second came around over 100 years later. The people had risen up enough to believe that they were giving the king the power to rule and then it wasn't God. Alright, this is, you should like tattoo this on your arm. It's so important. Because this leads to so much else that you need to know. Let me illustrate for you. What was happening in French politics at this time? You had leaders like, oh, a little guy named Louis XIV. You had another little guy named Louis XV, and then you had another little guy named Louis XVI, all from something called the. House of Bourbon, the Bourbons. Did they transform from divinely inspired monarchy to constitutional monarchy, the way that English had during the same time period? Did they lead parallel histories? No, they didn't. Absolutely not. These guys, particularly the first one, were the ultimate absolute monarchs. Okay? Louis XIV absorbed as much power as he possibly could from the nobles and from every other. Niche in society that he could. That's why Versailles was built to distract the nobles so he could rule over their home territories. Alright, what's the point of this though? English politics went to the people. French politics went to the leader. Fast forward in history, what happened in 1790? England began to form an empire. France blew itself up and spent the next 100 years squabbling with itself and going through multiple different governments. Because it hadn't set the same foundation that the British had with a constitutional monarchy. I don't like to. Editorialize too much as, as a review, as an instructor and as a writer, but in this case I am. I think the British had the right idea and I think you see the seeds of the British empire in their transformation in the 1600s to the constitutional monarchy. The French didn't do the same thing. Okay? So he says, didn't France create established constitutional monarchy during the French Revolution before with National Assembly? It would have been nice if it lasted, but unfortunately they had this little guy named Napoleon come in a few years later. After the revolution finally tamped down and then following that, they had about another 80 years of. Or sorry, about 70 years of instability before 1871, the Franco-Prussian War. So no, they weren't unable to establish the same kind of long lasting constitutional monarchy that the British did, in which the British are still celebrating. Okay, despite all the gossip and the stuff that's going on with that right now. Next one. Oh, wait, one more. I'm going to ask one question, not write it down. Who are the two greatest absolute monarchs in European history since the year 1500? I just named one of them, Louis XIV. Who knows the other one? If you had to write an essay on absolute monarchs, who would be your other example that you would use? No guesses. I'll give you a clue. It's not really technically in Europe. It's like Europe adjacent and we included in European history. What country am I talking about? The backwards man of Europe. Okay, I'm talking about Russia and the leader I'm thinking of is Peter the Great. Hope you're writing all this down, you guys. This is going to be helpful to you if you haven't started reviewing especially. This is a bird's eye view. Number nine, you should know the story of the scientific revolution. One story is that Copernicus. Led to Kepler. Who led to Galileo. You should know that passage of time. Copernicus was way before Kepler and Galileo. He was about 80 years before Kepler. The Kepler stood on his shoulders. On the other hand, you have this guy named Descartes, Rene Descartes, who was French. Reason I put them in different columns is that these guys up top use the inductive method of reasoning. Which is when you start with observations and then you draw general conclusions from observations. It's the basis of science. It's what Francis Bacon did. Rene Descartes, on the other hand, was sort of an outlier in this era. He was French and he was very much married to what. The deductive reasoning that had ruled Europe for so long, especially in the medieval era, when they were arguing about angels dancing on the heads of fin. Okay, between the two. Which one has come to rule the world? Inductive reasoning or deductive reasoning? Our civilizations today are now based on, correct Brian, inductive reasoning. We're in a world of data, as we all know. And that data is directly, can be directly traced back to the 1600s and the idea of gathering data before you make conclusions. So a little bit of context there for you. Next one you should know, of course, is the Enlightenment. Most people are pretty good at. Major names, you should know, of course, John Locke, you should know Rousseau, you should know Adam Smith. Invisible Hand and of course, Mr. Voltaire. Who had 15 different pen names, I think. Voltaire was just one of them. Those are the big major ones. Minor ones that they also might ask you about are Montesquieu and his. Different branches of government that we borrowed in the United States. Hugh, Emmanuel Kant and the first writer of the first encyclopedia ever, Denis Dietero. What's the difference between the scientific revolution and the enlightenment? Pretty easy. Check this out. You write this down. The only difference between the two sentences is the word natural and political. They, the two, the two eras have more in common than they do not have common, than they had. They are different. They both used reason. They both used a lot of reason and it's particularly the scientific revolution used a lot of data and observations. The only difference is in the type of thing they were investigating. Scientific revolution investigated science, enlightenment investigated politics and human behavior. But they both use the same techniques. Number 11, you should know the story of the French Revolution. You should know the different parts of the French Revolution. The Anshin regime, which is what predated. You should know the National Assembly. Calling of the National Assembly was only the third time the National Assembly had ever been called in Bourbon history. I think the last one had been 65 years previously. Third stage was legislative assembly. And then finally some fighting, some war. Fourth stage. When it got really bad, the national convention and eventually the reign of terror. This stage where things calmed down for a while was the Directory, which was a council of a group of old men who used the military to maintain peace. 1795 to 1800. And then we'll put as the next stage, even though he's kind of his own thing, Napoleon Bonaparte. I'm not going to do a whole section on Napoleon, although you know that he's got his own story, except to ask this one question to you guys. Who knows Napoleon's longest lasting contribution to European culture? One that they're still using today. What is it? Was it his conquest of great swaths of land? No. What was it? It even affects one state in the United States. It's the. Polionic code is huge overhaul of the legal system of France. Because the French went out into North America in the 1700s, I'm sorry, in the 1800s, they brought with them the polionic code. And in fact, the state of Louisiana uses a legal system that is based on the polionic code, as does Puerto Rico. Because the French were instrumental at that time. Okay. Question from Sohee, what about the enlightened despots in Russia and Austria? Are they important? I wasn't going to put them down, I don't think, but yeah, of course, you should know the enlightened despots from the mid 1700s. Prussia, Russia and Austria. You had Frederick the second, you had, and that was in Prussia and in Austria, you had Joseph the second. And then in. In Russia, you had, I'm blanking on her name, the one who married the Polish guy. Those three enlightened despots, thank you Catherine the second, Catherine the Great. Those three enlightened despots, you should know a little bit about them. If you get an essay, you might have to answer, yeah, obviously in more detail. The idea behind them though, is that they, they put up a good talk about ruling through reason and logic and extending liberal. Policies to their people and giving civil rights to individuals, but in the end, they were just like a cat playing the toy. They didn't actually enact very much of any of that. Okay? This is all sort of of one piece. You should know the story of the Congress of Vienna. Which was enacted after Napoleon collapsed. He was headed up by Metternich, Prince Metternich, who was the last true conservative in European history. Please write that down. Prince Metternich, the last true conservative in European history. He was a great visual here. I have a wall next to me. If you want to look at the video, he was kind of like a man. Sticking his fingers into a dam with like, like bits of the dam blowing out with like water shooting out. And he was like trying to plug all the holes like this. Because what was happening here were the revolutions that were sweeping through Europe, the nationalist revolutions. Groups of people trying to find their own identity, not only culturally, but then also politically and make their own nations. The two years that you definitely want to know for the age of revolutions are 1830 and then 1848. I'm sure you guys studied that in class, in your classes. Les Miserables was about 1830, the famous novel and the famous Broadway play that was set in the revolutions of 1830. Number 13, you should know the story of the unification of Germany versus the unification of Italy. Be prepared to explain either of them. Germany, there's, Germany has three different. Military actions that led to the unification. One was the Schleswig-Holstein affair. The second was the. The Austro-Prussian War, which is five weeks long. And the third was the Franco-Prussian War, which was six weeks long. All this occurred 1869 to 1871. Okay, and obviously the Mandrake United, it was Otto von Bismarck. Unification of Italy, you should definitely know that it was north versus south in a way. In the south, you have this guy named Garibaldi, who was very young, was agitating on the young working class people in Sicily. To unify finally. And in the north, you had the same guy, sorry, you had Count Cavour. The prime minister under King Guillaume Emmanuel II. He was doing the same thing, but he was doing it like a more sophisticated way. Dealing with Austria and France and playing them off each other. So in the south, you had the rabble rousing. Radical revolutionary nationalist, the red shirts. And then in the north, you had like the player, the political player who was like major international guy. They both had the same aim. Which was to come together and unify this squabbling peninsula, which had tons of cities that just never trusted each other for the last 500 years. And in the end, they, Cavour, of course, took control over Garibaldi because he was way more educated and sophisticated. But the fact is that they kind of, they kind of did it together. Okay? So the three military actions, Schleswig-Holstein affair, Austro-Prussian War, Franco-Prussian War. So just know those three. Okay? Number 14, you should know about the arts. In this time period, you should know that there was classicism slash neo-classicism, which was all inspired, of course, by the Greco-Roman stuff and then, and. Inspired by the stuff, by the Renaissance, which was inspired by the, the old Greco-Roman styles. And that was, of course, in the 18th century. Versus some of the changes that happened to art in the 19th century, which was, for lack of a better word, just called romanticism. This is not just visual arts. This is also literary arts and this is also musical arts. Okay, so please make a note, visual, literary and musical. You might get an essay question on this. So it would be great to write about like architecture, if you could, be great to write about Beethoven. Okay? And other things like that. Any questions, you guys? Okay, I think we're on the last third. Of the content review. You should know the two different industrial revolutions. The first one was smaller. And the second one was bigger, so we'll say it's more important. That's the one that most people think of as the, the industrial revolution. It's the one that began in about 1808, 1810. And created the famous Dickensian smokestack London picture that we have of, of new industry in Europe. What do you need to know about the industrial revolution? I'm not going to tell you. The answers to these questions, but here's three things you should know. Know the causes. And specifically why England prospered first. Why did, why did the industrial revolution start in England and not in the rest of Europe? There's like eight or nine different reasons, answers to that question. And you can find them in the McGraw Hill book. McGraw Hill book is, I think, is only $10 or $15. Please get it. It'll make your setting much easier. Secondly. Know the effects on social and daily life. Of the peasants, you know, they used to live out in the, they used to live in the rural areas. They used to rise and set with like the sun. They worked piecework jobs, you know, on these little, these little. Machines in their huts and things like that. And then they had to move to the city in order to pursue a life the way society was going. They no longer got up at the sun. They had much more unemployment. They had much more sickness. They couldn't find enough food. It was much more difficult for the average person to live in the second industrial revolution than it had been in the first. So know about that. And then thirdly. So know about that. And then thirdly, know about the effects on British politics. There's quite a few. There's quite a few, and you should know definitely about Chartism. If you recall that, which is the agitation for the rights of these workers. A question from Lea. What did you write? On the AP exam, well, we have to look at a piece of art and know what kind of style was used to answer the question, potentially. You might have to multiple choice question, where they'll give you a piece of art. And then you'll have to, in one question, identify like the type, the style of art that it comes from. And then in another question, answer about, questions about society around that art at that time. So the short answer is yes. Number sixteen, you should know all the nineteenth century isms. In the chat box, name some isms, you guys. Which ones are we talking about? And you're missing a big one. Starts with an A. Actually, you're missing two of them. One starts with a C. Well, actually conservatism wasn't the one I was thinking of. I was thinking of Marx and communism, AKA scientific socialism. But then what's the one that starts with an A? It's the most radical one. It started in France, but really took root in Russia, where they hated their system. And the people were desperate. Anarchism, exactly. So this is when Europe actively began to wonder if there was better ways to organize their societies. Hadn't really happened to this degree before. Know all these isms, know the people who believed in them, and know which ones flourished and which ones kind of fell aside, or anarchism. Number seventeen, know about imperialism and the scramble for Africa. This was, of course, in the late eighteen hundreds, about fifteen years, the last decade of the eighteen hundreds. Which country that basically never comes into European history comes into European history just for these fifteen years? Which country was like really into the scramble for Africa and whose leader personally owned something like seven hundred thousand slaves? Jothi got it right. It's Belgium. Yeah, this is the era of Belgium. I'm not going to go into details with this, but World War One, the Russian Revolution and the Treaty of Versailles are a huge story that you need to know. I don't think I need to go over it because it's not only covered in European history, it's covered in US history, and it's covered in world history. And you all should have like a working knowledge of the causes of World War One and the effects of World War One. Okay, as well as the basic outline of what happened in the Russian Revolution and then the basic outline of how Germany got punished at the Treaty of Versailles. And that should all be pretty clear. Great Depression comes after that, followed by the rise of fascism, not only in Germany, but also in Italy. Remember actually that Hitler looked up to having a brain fart. The fascist leader of Italy at that time. Mussolini, he looked up at Mussolini and viewed him as like an older brother from which someone he could copy. Okay. So know that story. And then, of course, you do have to know some military history for World War Two. And you do, of course, need to know all the stuff about the Holocaust, which we don't need to go over. Following that. See, I don't think that Lea is going to like this one very much, but the artistic slash intellectual shattering of the twentieth century is a theme that comes up on the test a fair amount. You guys understand what I mean by that? The artistic and intellectual shattering of the twentieth century is all the old verities or all the old belief systems that had been so strong for so many centuries fell apart. And you could see it not only in the art, but also in the intellectual thoughts at that time. Two major names that you should know to go with this are Albert Einstein, who shattered what we thought about physics since Newton. And then in art, Picasso picked up on this and began destroying the idea of perspective in art, that a single human could have a single perspective on an event. And that's he started along with others, the idea of cubism. Okay. Two more. We have the Cold War. The end of the famous British Empire and this whole period called decolonization of European powers, where they either voluntarily or involuntarily stripped away all of their colonial holdings all around the world. It was famously said that the sun never sets on the British Empire because they always had a piece of land like in every time zone all around the world. But at this point, the sun did begin to set on the British Empire. And what was I going to say about that? I had something else in the foot of my head. Finally, the last one that I think you should definitely know something about, because they do like to ask, is the birth of the European Union. How was it formed? How was it formed? Started in the nineteen fifties as an agreement between France and Germany to share steel and coal so they couldn't fight each other anymore. If they depended on each other for the resources to build tanks, then they wouldn't actually fight each other anymore. And from there, it just grew and grew and grew until the nineteen nineties. So he was Germany and France. There was an agreement in the late fifties to, to share physical resources that they would need to have a war with each other. This way they couldn't actually fight. And that's it. Are there any questions? It is, we have a minute or two left. Any questions about anything I haven't gone over at this point? Screenshot if you would like. Alright, I hope it was helpful for you guys. You can reach out for a tutoring session from me at any time. Happy to help. Check out WISEN's other AP study sessions too. WISEN's got, I think, about thirty of them scheduled in this week and next. So feel free to attend any of those. And that's about it. Take care, you guys. Good luck. Hope it helped.